It's a great day in Kershaw County. It's a great day in South Carolina. We've got this All-America County now convened today and we have the team here, many of the team here who went to Denver a year ago and won for our county All-American. And so, thanks for being here tonight. We'll hear from you all a little bit later on. You all sit down. I don't want to hear any noise out of you all. You always yell and cheer and do cartwheels, but it's great to have you here. We're now called to order. We have a quorum, but Mr. Snodgrass is on travel and a regret to say Mr. Tucker is temporarily ill. And so, we have a quorum with five out of seven. I see that Mr. Snodgrass was to have led us, but tonight I'm feeling spiritual and I ask you all to stand and join me with the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. Join me in prayer. Remember the words in a good book in the Psalm 33 where it says, "Blessed is the nation whose God is the Lord." Indeed, we recognize our full dependence on you, our Lord and our God, and we hope that you will join us today and tonight and every day and keep us safe and secure and guide us in the paths of wisdom. We especially ask that these men and women here today be inspired by your holy word and do this all into the honor and glory of your holy name. We ask through our Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen. Join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as it is.
Thank you, everyone. And we'll move now to the first item here, which is a public comments. We'll ask Mr. DeBeauz to do the honors. How many do we have signed up tonight?
Mr. Chairman, four people have signed up. The first person is Jim Steele.
As Mr. Steele comes forward, I'll remind all of you that this is a period of about five minutes per person. Mr. DeBeauz will keep the time. It's not a time for Q and A and back and forth with this body, but it's a time for us to be informed. I ask you to keep your remarks respectful and the quorum of this body kept moving forward in the spirit of its legislative functions. Mr. Steele, good to see you. Please, sir.
Thank you. Last time at a regularly scheduled meeting, I asked you all to consider doing something to volunteer firemen, okay? Making a call a call, doing away with the 30-minute wait time requirement and making medical calls equal to a fire call. I hope you've given that due consideration. I think these guys deserve it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jim. Good to see you. Mr. DeBeauz?
Second person to sign up is, and I have a hard time reading the first name, either Stephen or Stefan Edwards.
Mr. Edwards, is that correct?
Yes, sir. Yeah, Stefan. You can call me Stefan or Stephen or Steve. I was calling, I guess, about, I put my name on there, about the ordinance for the planning and zoning. I don't know if this is the proper time to speak.
Yeah, this is the proper time. Go right ahead.
I just, planning and zoning made it a low-density mobile home park or something I didn't know about. And then, so I requested a high-density to keep it so I can keep the mobile homes I have on the property. I have four or five vacant lots and I think the planning and zoning denied my request, of course. And I'm just here to offer that you all may change it. The place only holds 38 mobile homes, so it's only four more slots, but I just felt I needed to at least fight for my right to keep what I had because I didn't realize that they had changed the zoning. That's all.
Well, thank you, Mr. Edwards. Mr. DeBeauz?
Third person to sign up is Fielding Pringle.
Ms. Pringle. And she is the public defender, I believe. Please, ma'am. And bring the microphone over. Thank you.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
I don't know. Is that good enough, loud enough, Danny? Okay, go for it.
Okay, I can talk louder. Hello and thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of council. My name is Fielding Pringle. I addressed you as a body a few months ago in the spring during the budget process and I'm pleased to be here tonight. I am here to speak about the issue of the jail transfer of authority. I'm the circuit defender for Richland County and Kershaw County. I took over from Mr. Strickler about a year ago. Just to tell you just a little bit about my perspective, I am going to tell you that my opinion on this is that I am opposed to it. I think it's just a bad idea. I want to talk about sort of the simple and the sublime and why I'm opposed to it and sort of who I am and where I come from on this issue. I've been a public defender most of my career. Been practicing for 24 years. I have spent a handful of those years in private practice, most of it as a public defender. I've spent a tremendous amount of time at the Kershaw County Detention Center dealing with various defendants, but one case in particular was one of the most difficult cases this community has encountered and the death penalty case and I spent a great deal of time at the Kershaw County Detention Center. I have lawyers here, four attorneys, who currently are public defenders here, who of course also spend a tremendous amount of time at the detention center. I tell you all of that because I want you to know the reputation that the Kershaw County Detention Center has, both in my personal experience and what I know of, what people think of the facility as it is run. And I'm not here to tell you that it has never had any issues in the 30 years since it has been transferred to the county to run it. I'm aware of the issues that have arisen, but those issues have been tackled, conquered, and dealt with. And Kershaw County Detention Center enjoys a really outstanding reputation. It is a gold standard in terms of how it is run. That is from my personal perspective, but that is an opinion that's held by public defenders, private attorneys, attorneys that are local, attorneys that come from across the state. And it's not just a personal experience, that my personal experience has been very good. And what that reputation is, is a reputation for a facility that treats people in a humane way, that treats people with respect and dignity and courtesy, all of the values that I know that this body holds dear and values. That is from defendant's perspective, attorney's perspectives, family members' perspectives, and so on. And so, I just think it's very important for you to know that. But aside from that, the safety and security of the facility is equally high. And I, you know, it's funny, I think, as a defense attorney to stand here and talk to you about safety and security because that's usually a law enforcement topic, right? But I think I'm equally situated to talk about that and to address that because not only am I spending time in there, but my clients are there, my lawyers are there, we spend a tremendous amount of time there. And the bottom line is, you've run a facility for these many years and decades now that is a facility to be proud of, that you should be proud of and that is being run well, that is safe and secure. And when I have family members that are panicked and worried and nervous and defendants or lawyers, it's just, it's a different situation with this detention center. And I'm proud of it and you should be as well. See, the more sublime, as a defense attorney, you know, my job is to ensure that the constitutional rights of my defendants are protected. And this is a hard thing to talk about as I think about it because when I think about why I'm opposed to this, I'm thinking about sort of the potential for things to go bad, right? And for what I would be afraid of or guarding against. And, you know, I've met the sheriff. My lawyers speak very highly of the sheriff. And so, this has nothing to do with him. It is not personal to him whatsoever. But I think that you have to be careful in how you think about this and guard against sort of the potential for things to go not how they've been going and how you would want them to go. And there is an inherent conflict of interest that arises when you have the individuals who are vested with responsibility for arresting, charging, investigating crimes, gathering evidence against defendants, and bringing those defendants to court, seeing through to the end to conviction, where you take those same individuals and you have them housing the very defendants that they're investigating, gathering evidence against, et cetera. Those are two just very, very different jobs. I've worked in the system a long, long time and what correctional officers do and what law enforcement officers do, I'm not saying there's no overlap, of course there is. And there's not, it's not that there's no overlap in training, of course there is. But keeping defendants safe, housing, keeping them safe and secure versus prosecuting are just two very different jobs. And it concerns me and worries me to think of mixing those two things together. Another thing Kershaw County has done really, really well is the Kershaw Sheriff's Department now records almost all of the interrogations that we receive, confessions, questioning, interrogations. That's progressive. That's something that you should be proud of. That's something that not every county in the state is doing but should be doing. And, you know, it worries me because you can't just leave your law enforcement gathering evidence role at the door when you go to work. Your loyalty as a law enforcement officer is to the sheriff. So if you go to work as a correctional officer, but you're working for the sheriff, I think that it's very difficult to ask individuals to keep those two things separate. And I think you would see evidence arising in questionable manners and it's not because anybody has any bad intentions. I just think it's inevitable. Finally, I did bring my phone up to track my time, but then it closed out on me, so I don't know where I am. But I tend to get long-winded, so I'm going to wrap up. But I do want you to know that anytime you have any questions or concerns, please contact me. I'm happy to speak with any of you, come see you, do whatever I can. You know, I know that's a familiar tenet to everyone that we, is that my time?
Go ahead and complete your statement, please.
Thank you. That a community is judged by how we treat the least among us. And the county has done a really, really good job in how you have treated the least among us. And those are certainly the individuals that are imprisoned in your jail. And it is a job to be proud of and I just implore you to continue doing what you've done.
Thank you, Mrs. Johnson. Thank you very much, indeed. Mr. DeBeauz?
The last person to sign up is Laurie Carpenter.
Mrs. Carpenter?
Wants to say thank you.
Good evening, everybody.
Bring the mic down. There you go.
Good evening, Councilwoman Burns and council and staff. I just want to say thank you because I work in Richland County and when I come home on Monday, I noticed a new sign off of Exit 98 that stated that we were an All-America City and that the signs are going up on the county entrances. And as someone that spearheaded that and with a lot of our delegation in the audience, I just wanted to take the time to thank you. And honest, I was not here for that, but I'm also glad to see number two on New Business. And I just would like to make my public comments that I would like to thank publicly Al Bozard for that. And I would strongly encourage a vote of yes, that we need that logo on the water tower. But thank you because the signs are coming up and we love them. Thanks.
Thank you, Laurie. Mr. DeBeauz?
That concludes the sign-up list.
And that concludes public comments. We move now to the next item, which be the adoption of the agenda. Can we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Mr. Gardner first, second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Bozard, discussion.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yeah, Mr. Jones.
I'd like to make an amendment to the agenda.
Yes, sir.
On the item to where we have, under New Business, Item One, the sheriff's request regarding the detention center, I want to have that deleted.
All right.
And possibly reinstated at the next regularly scheduled county council meeting.
Very good. All right. Do we, the motion is to delete that? Do I need to have a second from that?
Yes. Mr. Chair, may I finish? I just have a couple of things. I spoke with the sheriff today and of course I've talked with a couple of council members and-
Normally, we would take the second, Jimmy.
Oh, I'm sorry. We don't have to.
Seconds. Go ahead, Jim.
I got ahead of myself. I do apologize.
No worries. Mary, that was Mr. Bozard on second.
Okay, anyway, what I was going to say is that I had spoken with the sheriff today and of course sheriff's talked to a couple of county council members and they indicated they needed more time. And the sheriff wants to make sure that if there's a vote on this, that there's an informed vote. So I commend you for that, sheriff. So anyway, that's my reason for requesting the change in this agenda item.
Other discussion? All right. We have an amendment to the agenda. Can we vote on that and then we'll vote on the agenda as amended? All those in favor of Mr. Jones' amendment signify by raising your hand. And it's unanimous and now we move to the agenda as amended, noting as Mr. Jones said he would like this placed on the agenda next month. Jimmy, I get it right?
The next regularly scheduled county council meeting.
Okay, the next regularly scheduled meeting. Okay, with that, can we move to a vote? All those in favor of the agenda as amended, so signify. And it's unanimous, Mary, and the agenda is amended under New Business. Item number one is deleted. Okay, we move now to public presentations. Our first presentation is by Livewell Kershaw by Ms. Catherine Johnson.
Good evening, council and everyone in the audience and those that are watching live from home tonight. I'm excited to share with you the first-ever Community Health Improvement Plan that was spearheaded by Livewell Kershaw Coalition. Again, it's very timely. South Carolina just put out their first-ever Community Health Improvement Plan and we're following suit of our needs assessment that was put out in 2017. So again, I'm here on behalf of the Coalition. A lot of great folks that participated in All-America City also participated in this Community Health Improvement Plan. And I am honored to just be the voice of the work that they have done and put forth so much effort on since, I believe we started March this year and we've gotten this out running off the ground here in May. So a little bit of background about the Coalition. We receive our funding through Healthy People, Healthy Carolinas, which is an initiative from the Duke Endowment. Kershaw County was actually one of the first five South Carolina communities to receive this funding. So again, way to go, Kershaw County, on securing this funding. When we work together, organizations and funders understand that we work collaboratively so we're able to take their money further. And one more point I want to make before I get into the Health Improvement Plan. The Livewell Kershaw Coalition is not its own nonprofit. Our backbone organization is the Community Medical Clinic, the free clinic that's serving our community. So who is Livewell Kershaw Coalition? Again, it's these folks behind me. It's those people that already have full-time jobs, that are dedicating, putting in volunteer hours because they see the value of this in our community and understand that having a shared vision of health and wellness for our community is so incredibly important. So before I move forward into the Health Improvement Plan, I really want to set the stage for the rest of our conversation this evening on what is health. A lot of times when we think about health, we think about being able to receive medical care from a doctor, going to a hospital. But for the purpose of this conversation, health is in a much broader sense. We're thinking mental, physical, social, and spiritual well-being. Just a quote that sums it all up pretty, in a pretty nice package is, "Health is not the absence of disease, but the addition of confidence, skills, knowledge, and connection. But most importantly, it is simply a means to an end, which is a joyful, meaningful life." So I think we can all get behind that definition of what we're talking about when we're referring to health in our community. So when we look at what makes a healthy community, again, it's not simply just eating a salad every day. That's not what it's all about and that's not what our goal is here. When we look at this county health rankings model that's put out by the Robert Wood Johnson Foundation, we're looking at health behaviors and those social and economic factors at the forefront, which means that we have to get creative in our solutions to addressing health because it's much more than just urgent cares popping up and creating additional access points. It's about addressing education, employment, income, family and social support, law enforcement with community safety, in addition to those common health behaviors that we see in our community. So for the Health Improvement Plan, I'm going to cover a little bit about our why, the process that we went through. I think it's really important that you understand the level of depth that we went through in looking at data that was local to our community. It wasn't sources that we pulled from state and national averages. It came from Kershaw County residents themselves. And then also touch on the value that this adds to our community. So again, we're working towards creating a shared vision of health and well-being in our community. And just to hit home a few points here on our why, some things we saw from folks involved in this process is, I also want to see, I want to improve our community so that this is a place that my children want to return to, to live and raise their families. I want to see our county that works as a whole and not divided. And I want to improve the quality of life in Kershaw County. That's what those folks sitting behind me all said as their why. And to drive this home a little further, this is a life expectancy map for Kershaw County. And as you see on this map, from one end of our county to the other, there is a difference of 10 years of life expectancy. And I don't know about you, but we put out a plan in about three months, so imagine what we could do if we have a 10 additional years of our life added if we start addressing health in our community now. All right, so a Health Improvement Plan is really to gather all of the great things that are occurring in our community, take a look at that needs assessment that's been conducted, where it pinpoints all the chronic disease burden in our community, and figure out how that we can strategically move forward in addressing these issues. Here is just some of the data sources that we pulled through. Again, this was all local data. And we also capitalized on the fact that our county has put forth Vision Kershaw 2030, where we have health outlined as an objective. From those areas, guys, we initially started out with about seven different areas that we could potentially work on to address health in our community. And those all arose out of our local data. So here we have some photos from that data walk that we put on back in March, where folks were going through all that stuff, information about hypertension, substance abuse, obesity, diabetes, and really taking stock of where we could first really have some really great effort and movement. And of course, we had a little fun, too. So all of these great folks showed up to our kickoff event and doing that data walk and really diving in. And really, from that, voted to select what are our three priorities that are going to be outlined and what strategies are we going to select for these areas over the next three years to make movement. So we came up with Access to Care, Mental Health, which we renamed to Emotional Health, and Obesity, which was renamed to Healthy Eating, Active Living, or our Heal Team. So those are our three priorities moving forward. After that, the most key piece when it comes to looking at data, which a lot of folks miss, is moving into action. What are we going to do with this? So we initially started with our sign-ups for action teams, which I outlined previously. And we've got some incredible leads for each of these. Representative Laurie Funderburke is heading up Healthy Eating, Active Living. Mike Conley with Access to Care. And Laurie Carpenter with Emotional Health. So these action teams met three times each during the month of April to really solidify those, the goal, objectives, strategies, success metrics, process metrics, what are the outcomes that we want to see at the end of three years. Presented them for feedback at a feedback session to the other work groups that are involved. And that gave us our first-ever Community Health Improvement Plan. So from there, these teams, you know, the work is not over at this point. We're just getting started on this three-year plan. So I just want to share a few highlights of items that are going on at this point. For our Heal Team, because it's so time-sensitive, we're really trying to push out the message that Eat Smart, Move More. Kershaw County is actually hosting and bringing forth FAN, which is Faith Activity and Nutrition, which is a program offered to Kershaw County churches and faith-based organizations to receive training on healthy behaviors and different policies that can be made and put into place into their churches. That training is on July 27th. For our Access to Care Team, we are revisiting a gap analysis map that was set forth by the Community Medical Clinic about two years ago and needs some updating to provide information to residents as well as providers and decision-makers on where the gaps exist in our community regarding medical care and social services. So we're really able to pinpoint areas in our community as well as address where the gaps exist and how to direct folks to where care is in our community. Outside of that, we are bringing a poverty simulation in January 2020 to our community for folks, individuals, organizational leads to really dive into implicit bias issues, gatekeeper issues, and creating image shift in organizations so that people can access care appropriately and address those issues in organizations. For our Emotional Health Team, right now, we're really pushing a mental health first aid training that is now available to Kershaw County residents and those that are serving Kershaw County residents. And that is available on September 19th. It's going to be held at the United Way. And last time I checked, there's under 20 spots left for this training. So again, it's free and it's available to Kershaw County residents. So again, that is a brief highlight of the main activities that are currently going on right now. There's a lot of meetings and conversations about different activities that we could move forward with. The next step, because there is so much depth to the work that we're about to embark on, a journey that we haven't been on yet as a county, we want to be sure that along, all along the way, that we're able to track and measure our progress. We don't want to get to the end of three years and say, oh, shoot, we didn't, we didn't change anything, we missed the mark. So we want to be able to track progress over time as well as make pivots when needed if something is not working accordingly. So right now, we're in the process of uploading everything you see in that document into a data system called Clear Impact Scorecard, where we're able to input this information as well as track and pair that quantitative data with the qualitative data that tells us the story behind the curve on each point, as well as who are the partners that are involved, because this is not left up to one entity. One entity cannot do this work, as well as creating an action plan for who is responsible for each of these activities. So now I get to the good stuff. What is Kershaw County's role in all of this? So bottom line, when I showed you that life expectancy map, I think we can all agree that we want residents to live that joyful, meaningful life to their full potential. And if we address these issues now, we have the, we have the capacity to get there. When it comes to Kershaw County, we would so appreciate the continued gift of in-kind support of space to meet for our action teams, continue that work. You've also allowed us to have our health ambassadors who are crafting plans for their schools to allow them to be in this space throughout the summer and we so appreciate that. Then we would also like to address Vision 2030 because we are actually operationalizing the health objective portion and can get that information into this data system to track progress and how we're able to impact and move the county's mission forward as well. So a few of those objectives from Vision 2030 are outlined here. And when I was taking some time to review this back when we started this process, we are either on track to make movement on all of these health objectives that are outlined here, or we are already currently addressing them. So we definitely as a coalition want to go ahead and get those up into our system and go ahead and track that information. The other call to action I would give is that when groups are coming to you as an organization and an entity as a funding source, I would take a look at this county health rankings and roadmaps model. You are not, you are not only in the position to move forward the county's mission, but you're able to move forward Vision 2030 and to capitalize on this newly formed document that's going to improve health and wellness for residents. So you're killing three birds with one stone. So I would definitely recommend that you would prioritize support to those groups that are already on the right track and really think, taking a hard, long look with a, with an in-depth plan and a process for measuring their outcomes on moving these areas forward.
Mr. Chairman, it's been 15 minutes. I think by consensus, we can keep going on this. This is very important. Please. Thank you.
All right, great. Perfect timing because I'm almost done.
Oh, no, you're not.
So here available, you know, I'm sure everyone keeps hearing me reference this Health Improvement Plan but doesn't have a copy of it. Online, there's a PDF available at livewellkershaw.org for you to take a look at. If you are interested in being involved in an action team that meets once monthly, you can, here's my contact information here on the screen. You can get in touch with me via email or phone. So at this time, I know I gave you the 50,000-foot level view, but if you have any questions, now is the time.
Councilman, please.
If I may?
Mr. Jones, please lead off.
Mr. Johnson, you work with the community clinic and I just want to say that I have all the respect in the world for that organization. You guys do an outstanding job. And I do not have that same feeling. You guys do an outstanding job and I do not have that same feeling for a lot of agencies that are around that get federal money, state money, but you guys do an outstanding job. And you obviously, you folks have put a lot into this. Live Well, and I appreciate you coming here tonight. It's obvious, it's clear to me, there's a lot of subject matter up here and we appreciate it. Thank you so much for all you do.
Other comments? Maybe I'll lead off. First of all, I spent the better part of Sunday and today helping a man who lost both legs to diabetes because of simply bad choices in his life. And it's enough to say that the, the life expectancy chart would be a motivator, but a quality of life is absolutely a part of our Christian calling and our, and our calling as a government body, that it would be insufficient just to have a secure environment with good roads and jobs and not take care of the wellness of our population and, and have a better quality of life for everybody. It is just absolutely vital. I, I would say this presentation is so core to what we mean as a county and what we think of ourselves that I would like to see this presentation given to the Kershaw Health District who has some capability to provide money, the City of Camden, Elgin, and Bethune, the School District, and the Chamber of Commerce, and anybody you can catch on the street. This is a great presentation. Well done. Secondly, with the administrator here, and since it's so core to our Vision 2030, as you've pointed out, and you never cease pointing that out, that maybe we incorporate a piece of this in our survey system that we do every year that then leads to our budget cycle, which starts in January when we have our retreat. It's been a fabulous presentation. Well done. I see here that we have many of our, of your team here. Can you introduce your team real quick?
Sure. So again, I simply led this process. These are the folks that put in the work and the hours to be involved. So I have Lori Carpenter here, Lori Funderburke, Amy Keiner with the chamber, Ed Garrison, Bree Anderson, Mary Rees. Who else do I have? George Gibson, Robin McAlpine. Susan Burrows and April Waugh. Mike Conley, front row, how could I miss him? And Caroline Coker in the back, who's also a health ambassador with our internship program.
And as I've said before, Kershaw County is not perfect. It's all-American because what's wrong with this county can be fixed by what's right with this county. And the names you just named off are a small part of what's so great about this place and why we're an all-American county. I thank you for that. But with that, I'd like to read a proclamation and maybe have the council vote on it. Proclamation honoring Livewell Kershaw Coalition. Whereas Livewell Kershaw County Coalition works to foster collaboration between citizens of all ages, working in partnership with public and private sector organizations and schools to increase community wellness, awareness of health issues. Whereas the goal is to improve access to quality healthcare and encourage citizens of Kershaw County to take ownership of the county's health, acting together to reduce chronic disease and obesity among members of the community. Whereas Kershaw County recognizes the value health plays in the future social and economic well-being of its citizens and neighbors, towns, and communities. Improving the health of the entire county is essential to enhancing one's quality of life. Recognizing the need for prioritization of health-related needs in the community, Livewell Kershaw has put together the trust, the first Community Health Improvement Plan, the CHIP, C-H-I-P, for Kershaw County. This Community Health Improvement Plan, or CHIP, built upon the energy and guidance provided by Vision Kershaw 2030 surrounding the objectives outlined for health, along with South Carolina State Health Improvement Plan and the Rural Health Action Plan. Whereas we understand that to create a culture of wellness, we must lead together as a community that is grounded in health and wellness as a shared vision. We must serve as a force to build collaborative partnerships across all sectors to further align arrows for organizations in Kershaw County. Now therefore, let it be known, Livewell Kershaw Coalition is leading the charge to embed health as a shared value in all Kershaw County organizations. With that, can we have a motion to approve this proclamation?
So move.
Mr. Gardner, a second, from Mr. Bozard, any discussion from council? Nope, I think, I think we can get to the vote real quick. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. And it's unanimous and I thank you all very much. Could you all come up and we get a quick picture? Please. Thank you very much indeed. With the next item is a public presentation by the sheriff in a request regarding the detention center. Sheriff Lee Bond, come on up sheriff.
Always a pleasure to talk to my favorite county council in all of Kershaw County. I'm gonna make this real brief. I doubt we'll be taking photos when it's over with, but Ms. Johnson really made it tough on my slideshow. Next time. I got my three-year-old grandson to make mine. Before we start talking, I kind of want to go a little bit into the background of our detention center here, best I know of it. Back in the eighties sometime, our Sheriff DeBruel gave the jail up. He's passed away. I can't talk to him now to find out his decisions on it, but I have talked to some of his deputies that worked for him at the time to try to find out why he gave it up. The reason he gave it up, what the deputies are telling me that worked for him at the time was he was getting crunched on his numbers, on his budget. To run both departments, he wasn't funded enough money.
Is his mic on? Is your mic on?
Yes. Lean over a little bit. Way I understand it is, is his budget from both departments wasn't funded enough to run them both. He was getting pinched pretty tough, so he made the decision to just stick with one and give the jail up. Again, I don't know whether there's any truth to it or not, but that's, that's the best I can figure out. And that's clearly not an option right now because we are, we are well-funded, well-taken care of, and I don't mind everybody knowing our council takes care of us. When the first, when the discussion first came up, when Peggy put in her retirement notice that she was getting ready to leave, and I forget who brought it up, somebody brought, you know, what, would you take the jail if it was offered? And my first answer was no, I don't want the jail. I've heard too many horror stories about the jail and, you know, I've got enough stuff on my, my plate as it is. I don't, I'm not interested unless the county needs me to take the jail. Not going to turn my back. If the county needs me, I'll, I'll step up and take the jail. Well, after I left that, that discussion, I started thinking, well, you know, if I put my neck on a chopping block, what did I just commit to? So I started doing my research. Again, going into it, not wanting to jail, I started doing my research, open-minded. And I started seeing a lot of benefits in the sheriff's office having the jail. A lot of things that we can do benefit the citizens of Kershaw County. Nothing I'm going to personally gain out of the jail. I wanted to bring that up and then, and then to go into this here. I always tell people when, when they're discussing it is that this is not a fight. I'm not bringing a fight to you. I'm not demanding you give me the jail or none of that kind of stuff. This is just, I'm simply requesting, because the timing is perfect now, that you consider what's in the best interest of Kershaw County when it comes to running the detention center. Of course, I feel this is the best thing for Kershaw County and here's some of the reasons that I, I can see upfront. Recruiting and retention, we always have issues with, with fully staffing the jail. We've had the same problems with the sheriff's office before January 1st. We're fully staffed now at the sheriff's office. We actually have a waiting list of people wanting to come to work for us. We, we fully staffed the department. I feel we can do the same at the detention center. One of the things I plan to do is the non-certified applicants I have at the sheriff's office, I plan on putting them to work at the jail. Most sheriffs that run their jails, this is the way they do it. They'll put them there, gives them a time to prove yourself, gives me a time to make a good assessment on them before committing county dollars to their academy time. This is one of the benefits. The salary there, I think our salary is pretty competitive. I'm not going to lie to you and tell you we're underpaid or, I, I think it's pretty competitive with the bordering counties. I think we can do better. With me, recruiting is not as important as retention. I want to keep the guys we got over there. As our public defender said earlier, the jail is being ran great. I agree with her 100%. The jail is being ran great. I intend to keep the same staff there and keep running it the same way. If you see the news, you'll see where often we get a correctional officer that gets attacked, cut, stabbed, hurt. These guys have tough jobs. They shouldn't have to come to us and ask for additional money. Just by cutting to one slot, the administration slot of the jail, that's going to give us enough money to split with everybody over there. On average, you're probably looking at about a $2,000 pay raise right off the bat without increasing the budget, staying there. As I've done with the sheriff's office, I'm not going to walk in the door firing people to make slots and to create money. I have no intentions on firing anybody. Through attrition, as people retire, as people quit and go somewhere else, we'll look at then the opportunity of combining slots and consolidating and cutting some corners when we get a chance. Merging both departments will help out by having future opportunities for employees from both departments. They can go back and forth. You're looking at a department, you know, currently at the sheriff's office, we're at, we're at 78, the jail's at 32. You combine two departments together, now you've got over 100 people in a department and 100 positions that people can move from place to place. They can have a future. It's not, it's no longer a small department. Consolidation of resources. Command staff, again, no intentions on going over and firing anybody, but we do have a command staff position, being the jail director's position is open right now. We don't need to replace it. The number two person at the jail is fully capable of running the jail and we can go forward where we're at. That salary can go into the, the current employees there, as well as some other ones that we've, we've been discussing. I'm not prepared to say it now because I, I don't want to say something if I don't know 100%, I'm good with it, so, but we do have other plans. Transportation, both departments can transport. Jail or the sheriff's office can transport, whether we're going to pick up a prisoner from another state or whether we're doing something local, either or can transport, it usually kind of comes down to whose job is it? Well, if both departments are under the sheriff, it's, it's all of our jobs. It's a shared job. We don't have to kick the can back and forth. We can, we can, whichever one is, is better available to go on a call to do a transport, we can do it like anything else. Court, government center, security, these are one of the things, we can also switch people back and forth. You know, our, our guys that work at the jail, they're, they got a lot of talent and we're not utilizing it to their fullest capability, in my opinion. Someone's at the jail, they're a jailer. As soon as they leave with a bus full of inmates to come over to court, they become a transport officer. When they arrive at court, they become security in the courtroom. That's being 100% efficient with them. It's not a matter of them bringing them to the jail, turning them over to our security staff and running with it. I think chairman and I, we were in a meeting earlier about this yesterday and a lot of things were brought up, I think can be solved by consolidating departments. Training, that's another thing that, you know, one training officer can handle the training for both departments. Currently, our jail doesn't have a full-time training slot. We do. It could be consolidated, that's taking a little bit off of their lieutenant that's handling the training and put him to work something else. Now, I did come across a lot of questions and concerns that people ask me. These are citizens and these are, some of the deputies asked me these questions, so I want to kind of bring up some of the ones before they're asked and kind of give you my, my take on them. Will the sheriff be responsible for a large portion of the entire county's budget? It's a fair question. I've heard numbers as high as, you know, the sheriff's office and the jail is, accounts for 40% of the total budget. Well, the sheriff's total budget for the county is 48.8 million. Currently, the sheriff's office is 5.8 million and the jail is 2.4 million. That's 8.2 million combined. That's, that's, it's not a large portion of that 48 million, but to me, that's, that's a lot of money and I'm going to take care of that money. I think both departments, as far as the money getting spent, should be spent by and should be in control of the chief law enforcement officer elected by the citizens of Kershaw County. Will the sheriff be able to fire jail employees without county approval? Yes, like any other elected position, you can fire. You don't need approval or grievance board, but I can tell you, I didn't walk into the sheriff's office firing anybody and I don't plan on walking into the jail firing anybody. As a matter of fact, the jail has fired more people this year than I have and I'm a brand-new sheriff. Will the sheriff be more likely to get arrested if he runs to jail? This has been asked by a lot of people and there's been a lot of stuff in the news over this. I can tell you now, and if I need to tell you under oath, I have no intentions on being arrested or in prison, even if it's my own jail, I don't want to go through it. Sheriffs don't get arrested for running jails. Sheriffs get arrested for breaking the law. I think that's something that, I, I think it's a good direction we're going in. Sheriffs, just like anybody else, are accountable for their actions. I think we're in a good direction with that. Jail administrators can get indicted, sheriffs can get indicted. It has nothing to do with running the jail. It's got something to do with breaking the law. What if we trust the current sheriff but not a future sheriff? Well, my take on that is, is we have to trust the voters in making the right decisions. Every one of us is here because the voters put us here. To say that the voters are going to mess up on the next sheriff, how can we say that they mess up on the current sheriff or any current council members? We, we don't know that. I feel they made the right decision. I think everybody's here for the right reason. I think the people put them here for the right reason. I think we can trust our voters from here on out to make the right decisions. Before I wrap it up with my last slide, I want to bring up Sheriff Anthony Dennis from Sumter County. Now, Sumter County just recently, just recently had their jail about a year and a half ago and he's been running it since then. I think they had some issues where it was, the timing was right then, a little separate from the timing where we've got here in Kershaw County, thankfully. But I want to let him speak just briefly here about some of the things he's seen within his first year and a half.
Good afternoon.
Welcome sheriff. Good to have you.
Certainly, I certainly don't want to be redundant on what Sheriff Bowen has and prolonged, but what he's had said about the detention center, the jail, and the sheriff's assuming the control of the jail, I must say, and I want to put on the record, is that I became part of the jail association when I became patrol of our jail in September 2017. And Kershaw County Detention Center, under the direction of Administrator Ivy, has one of the highest recommendations of any detention center in the state. I'm going to say that she was run well and is highly respected within the state of detention centers. But I do feel that at the time, you may say that I kind of received my detention center by default somewhat, but the positives, the pros and the cons that Sheriff Boone, Sheriff Bowen has brought to our attention, certainly the consolidation of the resources I was able to do. The training certainly was one of the positive things and cost-effective what it did. My officers, not only, I'm training, I'm training my detention officers now to be not only law enforcement, detention officers, but law enforcement officers as well. I know you do remember the flood, the thousand-year flood a few years ago. But now, I only, not only will have 130 deputies, I will have excess of 200 because of the deputies that have been trained through the detention center as well. And now we able to do that as well. As I say, it's been cost-effective. We consolidated many of our training, our transportation. We found ourselves transporting inmates from our county detention center and also our deputies. We were actually We were actually passing each other on I-20, transporting to the State Department of Corrections. Now we've consolidated that, and a lot of that had to do with lack of communication at that time. But our county council, and as well as Lee County Council, because Sumter, it's Sumter-Lee Detention Center, and now I assume control of, they had skepticism about Sheriff having control of the jail. And I'll challenge each of you. You contact any of the county administrators or the county council at those different counties and question them about, since the sheriff has been in control of the jail, and the positive effect that it's had, not only for the council, but the citizens, as well as the budget as well. Sheriff Bowen, I say that he's not terminating anyone. I did not terminate anyone, took control of our corrections center. We built on it. We build a relationship between deputies and detention officers. We, as one, works with the sheriff. It is a positive thing that the sheriff, the sheriff is the chief law enforcement officer in the county. I do believe, along with many other sheriffs, because now 75% of the sheriffs have control of detention center within the state, that law enforcement should be under the chief law enforcement officer. Detention center is a law enforcement entity. Deputies are a law enforcement entity. I feel that they should be under the chief law enforcement officer in that county, the sheriff. I know Sheriff Boone, Bowen, he's done a great job. I know he will do a great job as the head of detention center, as well as the sheriff of the county. And I ask you to reconsider giving Sheriff Bowen control of the detention center. I would regret. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff, and watch the speed limit on 521 going back to Sumter.
Well, since I have more deputies out now, we try to make sure that it's 66 miles an hour.
Good to have you here, Sheriff. Thank you so much.
Certainly one for being here, and I want to thank Sheriff Bowen for allowing me to speak before you, and certainly on his behalf, control of the detention center. Thank you.
Okay, back to you, Sheriff.
Sheriff, this was, this was the first man I called when I made that decision that I, well, when I started the process of doing my research, I called up Sheriff Dennis and I started asking him, you know, what about this jail thing? You know, I know you just got yours a little over a year ago, and what do you think about? He interrupted me while I was talking and said, "It's in the best interest of Kershaw County for you to be running the jail." I think that's a pretty relevant opinion with somebody just got there, just had his jail for a year and a half, although I know he's not county council. So I would definitely suggest, you know, talking to his council and getting all the story in there, and I do appreciate it.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Onto our conclusion here. It's like Sheriff Dennis said, 75% of sheriffs in South Carolina run their county jails. All that 75% has the ability to turn them over to the county. I feel that shows, right, that's a pretty strong number. That shows that they feel it benefits their county to have the jail. Sheriffs have always run their jails unless they chose to give them up. Like we talked earlier, Sheriff Abrul gave our jail up back in the 80s, which it was probably a good thing to do then, under the circumstances he was looking at. I've never had our jail. I've never given our jail up. I won't get a vote on whether or not I can get the jail back. Citizens of Kershaw County won't get a vote on it. But we will trust our county council to make an informed decision on what's in the best interest of Kershaw County. Want to commend Councilman Jones for putting off a vote, because we did have some council members that needed more time, which I think is a good thing. I think it's good that the council members are looking into what's in the best interest of Kershaw County, taking their time to do the research and decide what's best. At the end of the day, you don't give me the jail, I'm not gonna stick my lip out and cry about it. I trust you guys will make the best decision. Thank you for your time.
Maybe the sheriff will consent to a few questions if there are any questions here, please. Anyone? Comments? Maybe we can defer those till the next time we meet. Sheriff, thank you very much, and it's great having Sheriff Dennis here. Got to stay in our county a little longer. Good to have you here, Sheriff, and thank you again, Sheriff. With that, that ends the public presentations. We move to approval of minutes. We have two sets of minutes. We'll do them separately. The first is at tab B. It's the budget meeting that we had on the 11th of June, and the minutes are also on the board. Can we have a motion to approve?
Who'd approve the minutes of June 11th?
Thank you, Mr. Gardner, and a second from you, Mr. Bozard, was that you? Yep, all right, discussion. Seeing there is no discussion, we move to a vote. All those in favor of the 11 June minutes is written at tab B, signified by raising your hand, and it's unanimous, and we move to the next group at tab C, June 18th, which was a motion to cancel the 25 June meeting. It was a, it was a short meeting. Can we have a motion to approve those minutes?
May.
Mr. Conell, thank you, Ben. A second.
Second.
Second from Mr. Bozard, discussion. And with no discussion, we move to a vote. All those in favor signify by raising your hand.
I was not at that meeting.
And it's unanimous with Mr. Gardner abstaining. We move now to ordinances, and maybe Mr. Jones, too. You were not at that meeting where you were.
What meeting?
The meeting on the 18th of June.
Okay, then I abstained.
Okay, so he abstained as well, so two abstains. Do you have that, Mary?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Tom, I missed that altogether. We move now to the next item, which is an ordinance on the board. We heard from Mr. Edwards earlier. It's a first reading of an ordinance of county council to amend the county council's official zoning map. And as I'm understanding it, I'm gonna ask Mr. Gardner, Mr. Carpenter to lead us on this. It was, it was a motion that was denied by the zoning committee. Over to you, Mr. Carpenter.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, you have in front, in front of you tonight for first reading, an ordinance to amend the county's zoning ordinance to change the approximately 5.1 acres of land located on Ridgeway Road, Highway 34, up from its current R-15 to an R-6 classification. It has previously been in front of the planning commission, and the planning commission recommends denial of the request on a vote of seven to nothing.
Very good. Do we have a motion to approve on first reading the denial by the planning committee of this request? Do we have a first, a motion? We have no motion. So very good. Mr. DeBoz, give us some instruction on what to do with this.
Well, it comes to county council upon a recommendation. Recommendation is negative. So the council can do nothing, which apparently they're doing, or they could vote down the ordinance. They could do one or the other. Right now, I think you ask if anybody, the motion was, I believe, to uphold the denial. Is that not correct? Well, that would be in the form of a motion to deny the ordinance, to not pass the ordinance.
Very good.
Is that correct, Mr. Chairman, what the motion is, to not pass the ordinance?
That's correct.
You didn't get a motion. You didn't get a motion, so it's not on the floor.
That's right. So it's not on the floor, so what does that mean for the planning committee?
It means you've denied the request. Changed the zoning.
Very good. All right, and that is, the motion dies, and there was no motion, so we move on to the next item, which is, I love these double negatives. We move on to new business, and recall item number one on tab B was removed from the agenda for the next regularly scheduled meeting. Item number two is placing the All American City logo on county water towers, an item introduced by Mr. Bozard. Do you wish to make a motion or is it for discussion?
Yes, I make the motion, who you open this up for discussion.
All right, and so we'll have discussion, no vote, as it presently stands. Do we have a second to hear this discussion?
Second then.
Now, Mr. Conell, so Mr. Bozard, would you lead off?
Thank you. Myself and Mr. Carpenter have been trying to get the water districts to put this on their towers. Camden has agreed to firm theirs, and soon as they get their tower painted, they're gonna put the logo on their tower. And Cassett Water has agreed to do it, and it was waiting on Lugolf Water to make a decision. Well, Lugolf Water made a decision, they can't do it. Their funds are too low to do it at this time. I would like to see the county, in talking with Mr. Mike Hancock. He says that it's gonna take $10,000 to put that logo on their tower. And I understand we just finished spending some money on different things, but I would like to recommend that we come up with half the money, $5,000. I have talked with the mayor of Elgin, and she would not give me a firm commitment as to amount of money, but she says they would try to do what they could in, in funding as much as they could. And that's basically where we stand right now. So I guess what I'm asking for is, if, in theory, we come up with half of it, we can find the rest of it.
I have a question.
Yes, Tom, go ahead.
What's the, what's the total cost? What are you talking about? Total cost? I mean, there's nothing, I don't have any information to say, you know, what's it gonna cost us?
Total cost is $10,000.
For all the towers?
No, just Elgin Tower.
Is that the only one we've got to pay for? Everybody else is gonna pay for their own?
Yeah, Camden's paying for theirs. Now, Cassett Water, I have not talked with them in quite a while. They were waiting on Elgin to make a decision. They'd already agreed to do it. In theory, is that right, Mr. Carpenter? Cassett Water had agreed to do it?
I didn't get specific they would do it. They were favorable to considering it.
Oh, okay, I'm wrong then.
I'm just asking, you know, I don't want to vote on something to say, yeah, we're gonna do this and not know what it's gonna cost us. I don't want it to come back and all of a sudden be $400,000. I think we need to know.
No, it's $10,000.
I'm in favor of it, don't get me wrong, but I think we need to know a little bit more from a dollar and cent standpoint, personally.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Jones, please.
I thought the motion was discussion only. Of course, then I guess under new business.
We're presently in discussion. We're not, we're not involved, though, yeah.
I think you're discussing it now.
We're discussing it, Mr. Jones, yeah, exactly correct.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yeah, please, go ahead.
Mr. Carpenter, is this kind of thing where if we did it, you would just allot the funds to the authority that would put it up, Lugolf, Elgin, Water, or would you have to put it out for bid? Um, no, so we would just give them the funds and they would be responsible for everything else. Okay, and then we didn't, do we know how long the sign lasts from any source at all?
I don't know that yet, because like I say, I've talked to Elgin, excuse me, and I was planning on talking to Bethune, see if that city council could come up with any money also. I'm looking for money from many ways. If the crowd out there can congregate, can tell us, talk to these people and try to enforce it, congregation, yeah. Boy, it's a prayer morning, isn't it? But anyway, any help could be appreciated.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, Mr. Conell.
I was just gonna say, listen, I support this effort, and I personally donated and participated in the trip that you took out there, and I was very grateful for the result, but I just don't have enough information right now to make an informed decision. Perhaps with my own money I could, but I just don't know enough to use taxpayers' money at this point.
I have a number of questions, so let's, let's not force the issue prematurely. How much did Camden pay for theirs would be a good indicator. Secondly, we need to hear back from Melissa Emmons, Mayor Emmons is a great supporter of the Play Foundation, right? And we should hear back from Elgin to see how much they're willing to put in, and perhaps get some definition on Cassett Water. Those are the top three or four items that I'd like to know before we vote on this thing.
To answer one of your questions, Mel Pearson told me that to put theirs on their towers, they got to paint the tower first. It's costing $20,000.
Okay.
Now, Mr. Hancock tells me to put it on his water towers, it's gonna cost $10,000. But at this time, they cannot afford any money toward it.
Yeah, I get that.
That's why I'm out pounding the street trying to get some money.
Perhaps we could get the same person to put it on all of them and get a better rate.
Yeah.
If they do it.
That's what Cassett Water was.
If we come back and say, we've got five or whatever, what would you do five for? So I think there's, I think there's a lot more to be discussed before we.
I understand, that's why I didn't call for a vote tonight, just discussion. But I'd like to ask Mr. Carpenter if we could put out a letter to Elgin, to Lugolf, and to Cassett, and tell them what we're up against and see what they can come up with. I didn't ask for a vote tonight, just, just discussion.
Okay. All right, very good. Have we exhausted this item?
Thank you.
Very good.
Bring it up at another time.
Absolutely, I think it'd be great. We move now to the next item on the agenda, which is extending water lines to Dobie Mill Fire Department and up Highway 5, two different directions. There is no enclosure, it's tab, it's item number three. What are we seeing on the screen here, Danny? Of Dobie Mill? All right, well, we turn to Mr. Bozard. Are we looking at a discussion here? Do you want to make a motion?
Yes, I make a motion. We just enter into discussion on this, and we'll vote on it at another time, but tonight, I want to try to explain what's going on.
Very good, and we have a second for discussion.
Second then.
Yeah, Mr. Conell. All right, Al, open it up.
In talking with, I found out that my district, from my house, right above where I live, Pine Grove Road, from there going to the county line up Highway 5, there's no water. When you hit Shivers Green Road and turn left or right, there's no water. I was not aware of this. In talking with Mike Hancock, again, over at Lugolf Water District, he said, "Al, that's not the only district don't have water." He says, "You've got a fire department up there that's no, don't have water, Dobie Mills. That whole area does not have water." We just recently voted to fund fire service, and we got areas that don't have water. Trucks has got to get water. So my issue here is this. What you see on the map there is two options that Mike's Lugolf District, Water District options that the engineers give us. The upper district line you see up there is going up one way, and the lower line you see is going another. In asking Mr. Carpenter to tell me how many people is on this, the upper line there was 35, and the bottom line was 12.
There's 35 houses and 15 houses.
15 on the bottom line, okay. The bottom line has more pressure. It's coming off 12-inch line down by that new truck stop, going down and hitting 12 and coming back up Kennedy Road and back and so forth. There you go, thank you. And it's in the neighborhood of about $1 million either way you go at it, give or take a little bit. What concerned me more than anything was that we had a fire department that did not have water. And that concerned me more than anything else. Residents has got drinking water because they got wells. But if we can get water up in that area to that fire department, and those other people along that line can get water from it. And I guess what I'm asking is that we look at this, I've talked to Mr. Carpenter, he's given me four options, with the fifth one, four options was the different places we could get grants from. Out of those four, the one option that we have that's more likely to get it, it's only a $500,000 grant, which means that if we do this, the county's gonna have to come up with approximately another $500,000. The other option is to talk with our representatives there in Washington and see if the federal government can come up with the total amount, which according to what Mr. Carpenter tells me might not be a bad option. It might be a good option. But again, my main concern is, is getting fire, I'm getting water to these places. And I'm gonna sit up there for a minute and let y'all look at what's on the board, 'cause this is some of what Mike Engineer has brought over to us. It's about a 1.1, one-way going down Highway 12 and back. That serves 35 people. If you don't have to use the contingency, it would be right at a million dollars. If you go the other way, I'm gonna call it a southern route, option two, it'd run around 800 and some thousand dollars if we did not have to use the contingency. We got a 15% contingency in this thing. So that's where we stand. I'm trying to get water to Dobie Mills Fire Department.
Let's see if we can structure this a little bit. This is, if you go back to the chart that showed different types of grants, I've had woeful experience. This is a difficult thing, CDBGA, RIA, and so on. Those all take time. There are four different types up there. So we're not talking. types up there. So we're not talking about getting it done in the next six months. This is a long-term grant process. And we're not talking about doing it during this coming, this present budget year.
Not if it gets done, no.
Yeah, so this, this speaks an effort just to ask the staff to work this and come in deliberately with a, a proposal, up or down, and then we can address it.
Okay.
Is that what you're looking for? Now, Mr. Carpenter, you want to address how that might be best done?
Well, those are the, the grant options that are available to us. As Mr.-
Yeah, if you can go to the mic, please.
And Mr. Bozard also has mentioned, uh, your other, there are really three other directions you could go if you don't go the direction of, of those programs. One is you go to Columbia and you ask them to include it in the state budget. Two is you go to Washington and ask them to do a near mark, or three, county pays for it itself. So those are really your, your, your options in front of you. What, the amount of time and effort that goes into any of those four is more than just due diligence. So if council wants me to pursue one of those or all of them, then I need more than just a, would you please check into it and get back to us with some information? A significant amount of staff time would have to go into doing a proposal that may or may not even, even work. So if council is interested in this, then that direction to me that you want me to pursue this, then I'll pursue it. If you want me to do the basic research, it's right there.
Yeah. My point here is that none of us have had a chance to study it and we don't have a full body of seven here today. So you made my point. I'd like to, to review it. Uh, Ben, over to you.
Yeah, I had a few comments on this. Um, Mr. Carpenter, as I understand it, would the county, uh, apply for the grant for and in behalf of Lugolf Elgin Water Authority? They have to be tied into the grant, right?
That's correct.
Because it would be their water flowing-
Their water. Right. But the county would be the entity that would actually receive the grant in most of those cases.
Okay, but still, we'd have to partner with them on some level and we haven't fully explored that relationship yet.
That's correct.
Okay. Um, next up, I spoke with Captain Hughes, who, uh, worked for Lugolf Fire, but is also the captain for the Dobie's Mill Fire Department down Porter Crossroad. And he said it's a huge need for the district. Uh, I, I think we're undershooting the folks that would be served when we say it's thirty-five or seventeen, because it actually covers the entire district for, for which that, they don't just, uh, respond to fire calls that happen on that road. It's everyone that's in the entire district. That area received its first hydrant, uh, at the end of White Pond Road and Twelve, whenever Loves came in. They extended it down. So they, they do have some water access, but the area is growing, as you know. So I support this, but I don't think we should have to spend all county money on it. Lugolf Elgin Water Authority is the primary entity that will be selling the water and have, it'd be a revenue source for them.
Absolutely.
So I think we need to explore the, the grant writing process, the application process, see how much of, uh, other people's money we can get to, to make something like this happen. And just to understand that it's going to be a real need, just like, um, we've got full-time firemen going, going to be working at the Blaney location. It's going to be growing down Highway Twelve. You've got the Loves truck stop coming in. Uh, there'll be other development in the area. And, uh, I think it's a real concern. It's not one that we can address in the short term, but I will, I do think it'll take a little while.
And if I could, the, um, the residences were just those people who would be able to receive potable water. Obviously, a significantly greater percentage would be covered by fire than that. So those were the houses that would be directly able to receive drinking water.
Yeah, until we start getting rezoning requests for, uh, for development because there's water on the road.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Yeah, Mr. Gardner, please.
Can you receive more than one grant? I mean, I mean, obviously, if we got two of the five hundred thousand, that would take care of it. So is it, or is that something that you wouldn't want to put the time in to do? But essentially, the same information will be going into each one of them. So what I'm saying is not apply for all four and-
Well, it's not that you couldn't, it's that each one of them serves a different purpose. And if you're CDBG, their, their focus is more in your low to moderate income communities, of which this may or may not qualify. If you're under the EDA, their primary for, primary focus is economic development. Well, there's no industry that's committed to coming to this area. Rural infrastructure, they're the ones that we'd have the greatest likelihood, because they will consider fire and things like that. And then the fourth one is a loan program. It's very permissive terms. It's a great program, but it's still a loan. So those are the differences in them. So you, we could go after the loan if you didn't get the grant. You can get the grant, you, you could try to get a second grant, but we're going to be less likely to get one than the other.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, Mr. Connell.
Another comment I had is, while I represent the Elgin area, I'd, I'd be remiss if I didn't focus on the complete dearth of hydrants and piping in the eastern portion of the county. Um, whenever we started talking about fire service years ago, ISO ratings and everything, uh, the biggest hit on access to water came in the eastern portion of the county. So I mean, that's on, on a complete lack of hydrants and, and, uh, infrastructure for water, the eastern portion of the county is hurting the most. You do have the western portion of the county that's looking at the most population growth, but perhaps by looking at it, uh, a little bit deeper, we might be able to combine need and be more eligible or worthy for some of these grants by demonstrating what's going on in the eastern portion of the county than also what's going on in the western.
Go ahead, Tom.
I have another question, too. Does, uh, and I don't know this, Cassett, Thun River Water, do they have hydrants in, in any particular, in certain areas or whatever?
Yes.
Are they available to, for the fire departments to fill tanks or that sort of-
Theoretically, some of them are in positions that we can't-
I know, I've seen some out there. I just didn't know how, you know, if they're sporadic, which they probably are in certain places and that sort of thing.
Cassett's relationship with the fire is maybe less than it needs to be as far as access to fire hydrants.
But is that not something that we could-
Yes, sir.
-look at and, and, and work with them to put more hydrants in and possibly-
When the water line's in the ground, it's, it's simple.
Right.
When you already have a water line, the, you know, and this issue is, there's no water lines.
Right.
So it's, it's, hydrants are kind of a byproduct of having the water line. Cassett has a decent network of water lines in the grounds and they didn't necessarily put hydrants in. So for us, we could work with them to put hydrants in places that there aren't any. It's kind of a different-
Really different thing, but since Ben brought it up, I thought I'd throw that in.
Yeah. The, the conversation seems to be broadening to our reliance on pumpers and sucking water out of ponds and how do we operate a rural fire department over a vast expanse of acreage, seven hundred square miles. And, but the, the motion here is to discuss Dobie Mill, but what I see is an appetite to discuss, uh, the reliance we put on pumpers. So you guys want to stay on Dobie or you want to talk across the, the posture of our county and reliance on pumpers versus hydrants? Is that where we, where is this thing going?
Well, I think the-
We can, we can get on the others after we fix-
Yeah, I mean, I think the discussion begs all those questions, but, uh, we've got to learn a little bit more about who we can partner with and, and, uh, what grants we might be eligible for based on need.
Yeah. Well, Vic is, uh, Mr. Carpenter is appealing to not waste staff time when he doesn't have policy guidance from us. Uh, but we could further refine this a little bit and bring it back in next time we meet.
Yes, sir.
How about that, Al?
Yes.
All right, Al. Uh, but Mr. Jones, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, uh, wanted to make sure I sort of listened and heard everything everybody was talking about and the comments that were made. Uh, I, I'm truly mystified. While water availability was not fully addressed during the fire district legislation that we just passed, as we can see, providing water for fire protection is not cheap. It costs over nine hundred eighty-six thousand dollars to run lines along Kennedy Road and nearly, and nearly one and a quarter million dollars to route it along Porter Crossroads. You know, either way, that's a lot of money. It comes up to the question, how are we going to fund this project? What persons, what persons have suddenly opened up? And what about the rest of the county, which you just brought up, Mr. Chairman, I think needs to be discussed as well as far as that are currently without water as well. I, I don't think Cassett Water provides fire protection. Uh, have we looked at their areas and needs as well? That, that's, that's a concerning question I have. Will we have enough money to fir, to fund the fire protection and still cover council's real priorities? And I say council's real priorities, I'm talking about the splash pad and underwater real estate. Once again, I, I'm going to bring a solution to this dilemma without going to the taxpayers' pocketbook by utilizing resources on hand. I'm going to propose, as part of the discussion, that we look at selling our riverfront property and taking the proceeds from that and apply them to the water line project. The city of Camden, by the way, is building an identical park on the other side of the river. So why compete against them? I think one riverfront property or park is enough in Kershaw County. So that's kind of where I'm at in it. It's kind of just looking at our resources and, and, and taking care of it in that manner. Because it has been said how valuable that property is, uh, at the riverfront. So we should, should easily be able to sell it and get enough money to take care of this issue. So I look at it as, you know, fire protection, river park. But those, those are just my thoughts, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for the time, members of county council.
Thank you very much. Other comments? Uh, well, we need to frame this, Al. You've agreed that we'll, uh, need to restructure the discussion and bring it back in.
Yes, very much.
Uh, and not, uh, eat up much staff time, because clearly we're well short of a policy statement, how are we going to do this? But once we get to that point, we can then turn to staff to do the hard work. But boy, I can tell you, this is already very fine work. I'd like to have time to study these charts. None of us have seen these before we came in here, at least I have not. Uh, other discussion. We can close this and move on to the next agenda item.
Uh, before we go.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, Mr. Carpenter, we're going to look at, uh, grant money, see what we can do.
Yes, sir.
All right, I'm going to make it a point, talk with Ralph Norman and see if we can't get some money out of the federal government.
Okay, thank you. Uh, and that's, uh, that. And the next item is item number four, and I believe it's at tab F. Uh, if you can bring that up. There it is. I believe it includes minutes from, I guess, two thousand nine. Uh, with that, we'll move to, uh, Mr. Jones. Uh, is this for a discussion or a vote? What do you-
Well, I'm not sure, Mr. Chairman. I think, uh, I, I may end up making a motion here.
Okay, very good. Why don't you make a motion to open the discussion?
All right, well, I'll do that.
And then we'll get a second and then we'll go into it.
Well, I, let me just go ahead and make a motion that we direct staff to present to county council at, at our next county council meeting, a revised policy regarding retiree health insurance that would result in all current retirees and eligible employees hired prior to July one, two thousand eleven, be covered by the terms of the policy that was in effect prior to that. Um, that would be my motion.
All right. Do we have a second on that motion?
Second.
Second from Mr. Gardner. Uh, now with that, we can open discussion. Please, Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of county council. Back in two thousand and ten, uh, county council started discussing through the county ministry at that time, Clay Young, that there was going to be a change, a, a pretty drastic change in the insurance coverage. But Clay Young and I had many, many conversations and he assured me that July one, two thousand eleven would only affect employees hired from there forward, that it would not, that the other employees would be grandfathered in and, uh, and keep their current insurance coverage that they had. Well, as we've had some recent retirees, that's not the case. And, uh, one even had a policy manual that stated what they were hiring in, what they were supposed to get. So I call this broken promises. And what I would like to do is, as I said in my motion, ask the administrator, request the administrator, his staff, to go to the table and bring back to us a fix on this at the next regularly scheduled county council meeting. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of council.
Other discussion. I would, go ahead, Mr. Gardner, and then I'll-
This, this is not going to be retroactive. It would be effective as, as July one, two thousand nineteen. It would not be retroactive that we would pay, change it so that the last nine years would be changed and compensated for. It would have changed as effective of this year. So it would not, that cost would not be incurred, too. Is that right, Mr. Jones?
The way we're looking at it, I think the county administrator came up, I think there's what, twenty-six retirees?
Yes, sir.
There are twenty-six current retirees. And then, of course, I don't know what the number of employees that are working here now that are eligible that were here prior to July one, two thousand eleven. But, but what it boils down to is, and, Mr. Gardner, with all due respect, without trying to figure this out in this meeting, because we can't, it's very complicated, is that, as my motion said, that we have staff, give staff direction to go back and research this and come up with a fix that will be fair to these employees who were promised one thing and ended up getting another. And, and I, I will say this too, um, to Mr. Carpenter's credit, he has been working very hard on this, trying to get the information correct. Uh, he was in another county at the time. He had nothing to do this. He came here on July one, two thousand eleven. But let me say this, Mr. Carpenter said his county was going through the same thing at that time and they made the changes as well, because money was getting very tight. And I said, well, what did you do with your employees that were hired on early? He said, we grandfathered them in. So I commend y'all for that. And that's what I'm asking that we do now, is what we said we were going to do then and what I was told by administration at that time. And it was my understanding.
Uh, Mr. Bozard.
Yes, Mr. Carpenter, help me out with something. I was under the impression that every employee back at that time when this was changed signed a paper acknowledging this. Is that right?
That's correct.
So they was well aware that that was going to be reduced, right?
Based on what they signed, they should have been, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may-
Let me add to that. Um, there, we've all begun to, to look at this, and I was not here, but Mr. Jones and Mr. Gardner and Mr. Tucker were. Um, so we're relying on the minutes from that meeting and the meeting of, the three readings of that budget in that year. And there is no mentioning of grandfathering. And then the resolution, which also passed unanimously, and that includes, uh, the three men I just mentioned, voted in favor of it. So we want to make sure that we've got the, the facts correct. But if we want to do this retroactively, I would also let you know that the city of Camden removed all those benefits. Many of the counties in Kershaw, in the state of South Carolina in two thousand nine, in those desperate years, uh, along with the changes in the medical system, which still haven't settled out, uh, since two thousand eight, uh, also drove many of the considerations. So all these facts make it more complex. I'm not saying I disagree or agree with what Mr. Jones said, but there is no record for me coming in as a, a student of this to say there was grandfathering. Number two, there were cogent reasons. And when you talk to the previous CFOs and those and the employees, all of them, but except for the one that apparently Mr. Jones is talking about, say that they were somehow broken promises. Uh, if that is the case, then I'd say we urgently need to address it. But I need to tell you, I find no evidence based on the record of the minutes that were unanimously approved by this council to include those three gentlemen, no grandfathering. Now, the next point is, as Mr. Jones said, this is very complex. And I, I'm not disagreeing with you, Jimmy, but I'm just saying, this is what the evidence is in front of me, having consulted with legal counsel. We're not the only county or the only city in this state that has this problem. Uh, I would tell you that, that this could cost a lot of money and it would require us looking at the budget a second time. Um, I'm sorry, Jimmy, go ahead. You had your hand up.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for those comments. Um, don't agree with them. However, let me just say that, um, you're right, a lot of cities, a lot of counties have changed, but the majority of them have honored their word to the employees that they hired, uh, before their change date. You know, Mr. Bozard talked about, and I, I know we got that from Mr. Carpenter, but he talked about the fact that employees had signed something, you know. I'm going to tell you something, as, as being a former employee, when you go into HR, my question is, obviously, HR and staff did not make sure employees understood what they were signing. And when you're asking an employee to sign something that's changing their entire life with their benefits and they don't, and they don't realize, and they have said they didn't realize they were signing that, I think we failed them. We failed them in some way. So bottom line is, they weren't fully aware of what they were signing. And I think that staff had the obligation to make sure these employees understood that if they were signing something, that they were absolutely changing and losing the benefit package that they were promised when they were hired on. And I think we owe it to the staff. And, and you know, I hear a lot about caring about employees. You know, I've voted against some raises, because I am not going to go into taxpayers' pocketbook when a lot of taxpayers are suffering, didn't get raises and give county employees or government employees a raise. But I'll tell you one thing, nobody cares about the employees more than me. Nobody will fight for them harder than me. This is the right thing to do, Mr. Chairman. It's the right thing to do to ask this man to go back, this gentleman, and to bring us a fix and live up to the commitment. You've got employees here now, sitting out here in this audience right now that were here prior to July one, two thousand eleven. And I can assure you, they didn't know their insurance policies were changing. They're shaking their heads, no, they didn't know. So we have failed them. They were under the impression that they were grandfathered in, as I was told by the administrative staff at that time that we were. And I even called the former county administrator and I said, this is what we're facing. He said, no, 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 Jimmy, that was supposed to be a grandfather- He said, no, 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 Jimmy, that was supposed to be a grandfather in. Well, and I understand, you say you see no evidence, you hear no evidence, but bottom line is, that was an issue that really stuck with me back then. And yes, I did vote for the resolution, because I was told that these folks would be grandfathered in. Well, obviously, they weren't. And I'm asking that we just go back, and it won't break the bank. It'll probably be less, the way we're looking at it now, maybe less than, what, $60,000, Mr. Carpenter, just?
As a rough guess?
Maybe less, maybe a little more. You know, you spend money, you spend hundreds of thousands of dollars, you spend millions of dollars on things that are just, to me, pork. And yet, we want to sit up here, we want to debate and go by saying we have no record? And yet you've got employees sitting out here now, and I guarantee, if you go to any employee that's here now, that is working, that is eligible for what we're talking about, they will tell you they did not know that their policies were changed. So we have a problem somewhere in HR, or we have a problem somewhere else. But once again, I'm asking you just to accept this, let's ask the administrator to go forward and bring back at the next regularly scheduled council meeting, a fix to live up to the commitment that this county council or this county made to these folks who have been here so many years. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. To me, you've not established that there's an obligation. Mr. DeBoz, on the legal side, what's your view on this?
Well, two points, Mr. Chairman. First, the fact that employee signed, they got a copy, is irrelevant. They weren't consenting to it. When they signed, they got a copy. They weren't saying they agreed to it. They were only saying they got the policy. Had they not signed it, it wouldn't have made any difference. If you'd come in and said, I'm not going to sign, that you gave me a copy, an employee, the fix is very simple. The person just hands them a copy and writes on there, "Employee Ken DeBoz," I was an employee, incidentally, "Employee Ken DeBoz got a copy of this." It's only saying they got a copy, not that they agreed to it. The policy had already been passed at that time. That was the policy. Consent is irrelevant. They weren't consenting to it, incidentally. You said they got a copy. The second point, though, is for health insurance, and this is an important contractual matter. If you look at the policy on page 10, it has "important," underlined in bold print. It says, "Important: These insurance benefits may be altered or eliminated by the county at any time and are subject to budgetary constraints." That statement is a truism. Nobody was agreeing to that. That is still a truism. Medical benefits are not contractually required to be provided. So as a matter of law, the county can alter or eliminate these insurance benefits at any time. That's a truism. Still can. And I would suggest that governmental entities, to my knowledge, do not enter into contractual obligations to provide insurance benefits to current or future employees other than what's budgeted. That's what that says. So you can change it. I mean, Mr. Jones is correct. The county can change it and pay for it. It's a matter of paying for insurance benefits, it's through PIBA, Public Employee Benefit Association, and they don't care who pays the benefits, as long as they're paid. So the county can pay them, yes, they can. The county can change it, yes, they can. But I would suggest that the county needs to have the full knowledge that the statement, and employees need to have full knowledge, that the statement, "These insurance benefits may be altered or eliminated by the county at any time," is applicable as a matter of law.
Thank you. Other discussion? Yeah, Mr. Conell.
I have to do a lot more research on this issue to get educated on it, but as a matter of law, just a couple of questions. So as you said, it's totally irrelevant that someone signed a form that says, I received a copy of the policy. It didn't matter if they said I like it or not, or I accept it or not. They could say I don't accept it, and it would still apply if county council as a body voted on it.
It was a matter of law. They were just saying they got a copy, they were notified.
So what's significant, then, is that in 2009, when many of us weren't here, the council voted on language that didn't have, well, on the real property side, we call it nonconforming uses, but that basically means you're grandfathered in and can continue with your nonconforming use. But there wasn't that type of language on the HR side that was voted on at that time that would entitle these folks to retention of those benefits?
Well, yeah, it all goes back to, we're getting a little far afield here, but to your point, I think, if my memory serves me correct, actually, the city of Camden was sued over changing employee benefits, health insurance benefits. I believe they were. And I believe that case went to South Carolina Supreme Court, just from my knowledge. And the South Carolina Supreme Court ruled with the city of Camden that they could change employee benefits. And I think Mr. Carpenter, in other jurisdictions, he'll tell you that is the law, isn't it, Mr. Carpenter? The law is that that statement is a statement of law. So you can provide the benefits, certainly you can do it. Mr. Jones is correct. If this council votes to change the benefits, you provide current employees or retirees health insurance, you can certainly do that. But it's grandfathered in, there is not a concept in this, because it's a current budgetary matter that the council can change at any time. And is that not your understanding, Mr. Carpenter? You can do it, but you need to understand that it's not giving anybody any right going forward.
Well, the other thing is, it strikes me, as we do our budget, we always tell Mr. Carpenter, bring it in balanced and in the black, and he's done that. And prior to him, that was a requirement for the administrator at the time that this was done 10 years ago or nine years ago. But it was also a recession, and I would say that governmental bodies, like the school district and the city of Camden, took drastic cuts during that period, and it was wise to do so. Teachers pay, as you know, we had a moratorium on employee pay rises until 2015, until we got out of that hole. So this is kind of driving by the rearview mirror, but governmental bodies and businesses need to have the authority to make changes where they can to survive. And I remember long discussions with Dr. Frank Morgan about it, what happened to Donnie Wilson, his CFO, when he had to go and make the cuts they did over there. So it's a prudent thing to have the flexibility to do that. What I'm just saying is, there's no record in any of the county minutes or in the law itself that grandfathering was to be done. And it seems to me that we're making a precedent here. Now, in full recognition, we still do have, I think, some $300 in there per month, per employee in retirement. And so that money, for anybody who gets to 10 years, to include our recent jail directors getting $300 a month towards healthcare insurance, then that is a substantial amount of money that the city of Camden doesn't presently provide. So on the good side, we as a county still provide, in a compassionate way, money for health insurance. And it's on, it's going going right now, it's in our budget. And I would say that the sheriff's department, the fire departments, the administration, finance auditor, all of those, when they retire, 10 years on, they get $300 a month for healthcare. And no other municipality or county in this county, and that would be the only county that's us, does that. Beaufort County does zero. Camden does zero. This county cannot be portrayed as not having had compassion for its employees. Even in the worst of times, somehow, Mr. Vic Carpenter managed to find $300 to keep health insurance alive for the employees. So what we're talking about is something more than the $300 that Mr. Jones would like to bring in. And frankly, I think I need a little more study on this. I don't understand it. But at this point, I think I would be in opposition, because we as a county have shown good faith by keeping $300 in there per month. Yeah, Jimmy, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Let me just say, too, that it is gracious of us to give them $300. But she, I know for a fact that there are two employees that are paying $1,000, they're getting $300, but they're paying $1,000 out of pocket. Bottom line is, there was a commitment made to these employees, and I'm asking, I'm asking, the motion said nothing about doing it, except it said sending the administrator back to come up with a fix and bring it back before us, that we would have to vote on it at that time. So if my motion is denied, we're denying him the opportunity to just go and bring us back a recommendation.
A language, to change the language. And that would change the budget, too, would it not?
No, probably would not. We don't know that, Mr. Chairman, because we don't know how much money it is. And based on the research that he's already done, it wouldn't change the budget for this year much, would it?
It would change line items, then the budget, but...
So it changes the budget.
But minimal, minimal compared to what's been done in the past by this county council, Mr. Chairman.
And so, and in fact, opens the budget. And so that is a challenge for me to accept. Mr. Conell, please.
Wait a minute, I hadn't finished.
Yeah, go ahead.
It may not change the budget. We don't know that, because we don't know the specifics of what Mr. Carpenter would bring back.
Yeah. Can I let Mr. Conell go now?
Yes, you can.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Ben? I was just going to say, supporting you at this point, Mr. Jones, implies that a fix is needed. Now, you lived it, you were there. I wasn't there. A lot of this, I read through the packet, but a lot of the additional information you brought up, saying that various administrators told you this or that, or, I just don't know. I need to research the issue to be informed on it. So I'd ask that we put it off so that we can learn some more about it. Supporting you implies that I'm saying, yes, that there is liability there, and as a matter of law, I don't know that.
Mr. Chairman, if I may. I'm willing to put this off tonight, and I will bring it back up at a later date. And, because I do want to respect Mr. Conell, if he needs time. I think he's being genuine about it. He really needs some time to look at it. And I just, Mr. Carpenter, if you would, though, I would like to ask you to just continue looking into this and try to come up with some solution for us, because I am going to bring this back at a later date, and it probably will be at the next regularly scheduled council meeting.
Very good. So you withdraw the motion with the same action to follow.
Let me ask Mr. Gardner.
Sounds good to me.
All right. All right, that'll be it. I withdraw my motion to bring it back. I want the employees to know, I'm going to bring this back at a later date.
Very good.
I'm not going to let it just drop and go away. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Useful discussion. We go to the next item on the agenda, which is item number six, which is to cancel the next meeting on the 23rd of July and the August 27 meeting. So...
Did you forget one?
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I went right past my reading. Item number five is a grievance committee appointments. The county council, it says, will appoint a committee composed of seven employees to serve the terms of three years, except that the members be appointed initially should be appointed, so their terms will be staggered. With that, Mr. Carpenter, can you open that up for us, please?
Mr. Chairman, members of council, I present to you tonight a slate of seven county employees representing various entities within the county itself, elected officials, public works, parks and rec, courthouse, and government center. The terms they would serve would be between one and three years. All the individuals have consented to serve, presented to council tonight for your consideration.
Very good. Can we have a motion to approve the list that the administrator recommends?
Showmowed.
Second, then.
We have a first from Mr. Bozard and a second from Mr. Conell. And Al, thanks for catching me in my oversight there. Any discussion? With that, we move to a vote. All those in favor signify by raising your hand, and it's unanimous. And we move to item number six, which is the cancellation of the 23 July and 27 August meetings at tab G, I believe. Well, it doesn't need to be up there, it's pretty simple. Can we have a motion to do so?
Showmade.
Mr. Bozard, a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Gardner. Any discussion? As a matter of just notation, we do have two items we want to bring forward, that's brought forward by Mr. Jones, and maybe, Al, you'll have some stuff ready. But with that, we move to a vote. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. And it's Mr. Gardner, Mr. Bozard, and Mr. Conell. Those opposed, Mr. Jones. Thank you. And it passes. So the next meeting, then, would be the 13th of August. Move now to council?
No.
August?
I forgot we're in July. I was thinking we're in June, Phil.
Yeah, 13 August. With that, we move to council briefings, led by Mr. Jones, sir, please.
Mr. Chairman, thank you, members of county council. Thank you as well. The next regularly scheduled council meeting is what?
August 13.
August 13. That's when I want to have this, everything ready to bring back for the staff. Let me just say that, a couple of things here, briefly. Mental health. I think mental health is a crisis in our community. I think mental health is certainly out of control to some point and issue. But I would like to say to Mr. Carpenter, I'd like to get with you and see what we can't do to maybe work with some of the agencies that are around to try to do what we can do to partner with them when it comes to the mental health in our community. And a lot of folks are, a lot of families are dealing with that. Also, on the firefighters' pay, the on-call, I had been asked, I know this one citizen guy spoke on it, I had been asked to say something about that, and I'm in favor of the firefighters when they get there to get their pay and not have to sit around and wait. But then, it was brought to my attention by administration that the reason the policy was changed to 30 minutes is because some firefighters were coming there, getting there, kind of checking in, then leaving. So obviously, there was some checks and balances that needed to be done. I think they should be paid as soon as they hit the station. However, I don't think they need to just turn around and leave and go home. I think we'd all agree with that. So I think there can be a balance there. I'd like to see some kind of policy come forward that we could maybe look at changing it, going back, as Mr. Jones said, going back and paying them as soon as they come to the station. But they need to understand, too, they got to work with us, and they just can't turn around and go home, they're just coming to get the points and turn around and go back. But, Mr. Carpenter, I would like you to look into that, and maybe we can bring that up at a later date. And I don't know what would be appropriate, probably at budget time.
We'll come back and...
Okay, okay, sounds good. But having said that, I'm not going to dwell on this, but I'm very passionate, and it doesn't affect me in any way whatsoever. This retirement issue affects me in no way whatsoever. But it affects a lot of folks that are out there right now. I saw a lot, I know 26 currently retired folks and also some eligible employees that have spent their life at Kershaw County, working, dedicated, and doing such a good job. And I just hope that this council will give it some serious thought, and we'll make this, it's a minimal, minimal gesture. And I hope we'll do the right thing when that time comes back before this county council. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, members of county council, for the time.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Gardner?
No report.
Mr. Bozard?
Thank you. Ms. Johnson, I want to thank you for that briefing. I was not aware of a lot of things you brought up, and I appreciate that. You did an outstanding job. And I want to thank council for considering the water lines at Dobie Mills and also the signage for our water towers. And, Mr. Carpenter, I want to thank you for finally getting our signage for the county up. Did we ever come across with a big one on the interstates for coming and going, and how are we doing this?
We're working on that one now.
We working on this one?
Yes, sir.
Good, thank you very much. There's more coming. Thank you.
Ben?
Mr. Chairman, I would just thank Ms. Johnson and the cohort, many of whom had to go due to the hour of the meeting. They do some great work in Kershaw County, and it shows. Thank you so much. That's all I have.
I would just close out. Great briefing by the sheriff. Thanks to the sheriff in Sumter County, coming this distance. I hope he gets arrested for speeding on the way home, sheriff. That was an excellent presentation by Ms. Johnson. I didn't expect anything less. I think she did 15 minutes without taking a breath. You ought to hear her sing, and you ought to see her run. It's just an amazing, talented young lady, and we have a great county, as I say often, government ain't the answer to all our problems, and she is a nonprofit. Look what she and Livewell Kershaw and the Play Foundation and all these other organizations are doing for our county and our people. I regret to say, you know, I'm a little bit of a health nut, but our county is at the bottom in overweight statistics, and our state is near the bottom in the nation level. So we have got to do something, we're in a crisis. And it's not just in overweight, it's, as Mr. Jones said, mental health. But to give you some examples of what we can do together with or without government, Catherine and her team advocated, and we have now mental health counselors that are interning from USC in the schools, and that helps us address some of the problems. If you work with Mr. Hamm out of Sumter, he has sent additional counselors over here, and so on and so forth. We have the Alpha Center, again, another non-governmental organization, and on and on and on. We are stronger when we work together, and it's an amazing county, and we have amazing people. Compassionate, hardworking, and very talented. With that, Mr. Carpenter, please.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, one item tonight, as you know, summer is in full swing, summer camps are going on. I just have a picture of one of our camps, Camp Sun Fun, Camp Sun Fun is running this week. It's for our special needs, exceptional kids in the community. What you see are the Camden Clowns, the fire department from the city of Camden has a clown unit that comes out. So there you see our kids at our camp, taking part in that activity. That's my report.
Uh, Mr. DeBoz.
Nothing, Mr. Chairman.
All right, with that, I'll entertain a motion to disband. Do we have such a motion?
Yeah, I'll make that one.
All right, Mr. Bozard. A second from Mr. Gardner, any discussion? Very passionate discussion up here today, great meeting, all those in favor signify by raising your hand. And we are unanimous, and we are adjourned.